Good morning. It's the mission of Big Walnut Local Schools to inspire and guide each student to his or her maximum potential. And I'd like to call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Jeremy, if you wouldn't mind calling the roll, please.
Mr. Crowell?
Here.
Ms. Dorsh?
Here.
Mr. Fuji?
Good morning. Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Okay, that'll bring us to a superintendent's report chock full of information.
Thank you. Good morning. I actually want to start in on an item under communication as bullets there will be the main things I want to talk with you about today. But I do want to talk a little bit about graduation. So I did have the opportunity to talk with our local health commissioner last night. As we mentioned before, and Andy Jados is on this call as well. Yes, I see him now. So he can kind of chime in or if you have questions for him. But we had shared, as we told you before, we had shared our plan with the Delaware General Health District, with the commissioner previously. And I think I'd shared with you that she thought it was very well thought out, thought it made a lot of sense. At that time, the only holdup was the 10-person limit. So I reached out to her again, as I shared at our last meeting, the order was supposed to expire at the end of June. The governor had put out that they were going to carry that over until they made the school announcement. When the school announcement was made, we didn't hear anything about that. So I reached out to her and just asked, you know, hey, are we missing something? So she sent me the part of the new order that does reference it. And I said, well, we're at a point where we need to make a decision on graduation. We feel like we have a plan that, you know, obviously there's risk with any situation, but we feel like we have a plan that can keep people safe. Again, referencing having the graduates spaced out six feet apart in all directions similar to, I know some of you have seen the way that Sidney High School did that, utilizing the entire football field. They graduated 268, we're around 250, so similar number. And then bringing families in staggered times at different entry points, seating families or household members socially distanced from other households. And so we felt like that that's a safe or safer than going to Walmart right now. So one of the things that Sheila talked about was, she goes, you know, it's really frustrating because now they're saying you can have up to 2,500 at a fair, which is an uncontrolled event. People are walking around. You have a controlled environment. So definitely I see the frustration. So we finally got to a point where she said, you know, I can't approve the plan because it violates the 10-person limit. But if you and your board want to move forward, I'm happy to, you know, look over your plan again, help you make any tweaks. You know, happy to acknowledge that you're certainly putting in the social distancing and expectations to keep things safe. And basically, I'm not going to ride it on my white horse and stop you. So that's kind of a summary of our conversation. And I'm at a point where, you know, Andy and I have talked a lot about it. We need to make a decision really this week because it's scheduled for July 25th. And we do need to let graduates and families know if the plan is in person or if we're planning to do the virtual piece. One of the things that she suggested was, you know, maybe having a way for people that weren't comfortable with that to still do the virtual pickup where maybe they can pull in, get their diploma, and get a picture with their families like a lot of schools have done. And that way, you're kind of, if people aren't comfortable, they feel like there's another option for them. So Andy, did you have anything, I guess, before we open up to discussion from the board, anything that I missed that you wanted to add there?
No, and the other thing that we would do, you know, obviously, we would figure out how to stream it as well. Because we haven't figured out an exact number, but we would have to limit the guests, you know, whether that would be two or four. But we would have to limit the guests so we could maximize, you know, spreading, you know, everyone out in the, in both stands. But no, I think that's, I think that's the biggest thing. And then there's a couple of little things, like, you know, when I talked to, I was able to talk to Sidney High School for about an hour, talked to the graduation advisor. And she said the only place that they really kind of dropped the ball was when the students assembled and then they walked them out. She said there was no social distancing then. There was no way to keep 260 kids. You know, she said that part was a mess. So thinking about, do we have them walk in, which is tradition? Do we just have them go straight to the seat? So anyway, some of the details we'd have to work out, but I do feel confident that with bringing in extra restrooms, you know, doing all the things that Angie mentioned, that, you know, not 100% sure, but we could be pretty close to have all those recommendations in place. And then the other thing that Sidney did is they had a waiver. Everyone that attended signed a waiver, which, you know, I don't know how strong that is or not, but they did do that piece as well.
Which would be similar to what we're having our athletes sign right now as they're back in the buildings training. It's essentially acknowledging that anything you do right now presents some risk and that they understand that.
But just to what Angie said, I would say, you know, being the high school principal and trying to plan, you know, we're right now at two and a half weeks. And just thinking, you know, if we go with the drive-through, if we go with graduation, or possibly even both, that, you know, we'll just need to, you know, the plan, it'll need to start immediately.
So with that, I would love to hear some, I guess, reactions, guidance, comfort level from the board with proceeding within person versus doing remote.
Angie, can you, can you, I guess I was kind of surprised what you, what you shared today. So can you say again what Sheila said, you know, her stance was on this? I mean, I guess, what's our, what's our legal liability if we move forward with this? Is there any issue with getting a citation from, whether it's a health department or state government? I don't know.
Yeah, obviously, I asked that. I said, you know, I don't want to end up in jail for this. And she said that they're not really the ones that come in and would be the enforcers per se. And they don't issue citations. It would be, and certainly I'd want to reach out and talk to them, but she said it would be the local police and/or sheriff's department. And she's not really seeing where they're doing that either. So, I mean, there could be some risk on that front. I was actually, I guess, a little pleasantly surprised. I mean, she said, I don't recommend you do it. She said, you know, the county's orange, but it's not really our side of the county. So something there also to include.
So Sheila's saying we shouldn't do this.
She said she doesn't recommend it, but she wouldn't stop it. So.
She can't sanction it no matter how positive and effective she thinks the plan is, correct?
Because of the 10-person limit.
But then I think it's interesting that on the same hand, she talks about how, you know, the fairs allow 2,500. So I feel like, Auntie, correct me if I'm wrong, I feel like maybe her guts telling her that with everything going on and being consistent that this maybe would be as good a situation, you know, as the other ones. However, it's still the letter of the law that says the 10.
She's talked a lot about, in several conversations I've had with her, she's talked a lot about the controlled situation versus an uncontrolled situation. So if you were to have that many people, and this is why unfortunately, we got to a point where, I know Andy's worked with the students that are involved with prom planning on doing a dinner and, you know, getting dressed up that way. But we couldn't get to a point where we felt with where things are right now, we could endorse dancing. You know, I'm not naive enough to think kids are not doing things like that on their own. But to endorse a dance where they're, you know, in close proximity and all that, we didn't feel we could do. But the difference between something like that or even a fair, quite frankly, is this is lots of controls in place with social distancing, controlled access points. All the things that we have put in place make it a controlled situation. That's the term she kept using. That's why she's not overly uncomfortable with it. And it was literally about the 10-person limit because that's still technically in effect. She said, I don't understand why it's still in effect for this when you can do all these other things, but it is.
I would say, go ahead and do it. She's already claimed that she can enforce it. Somebody else is going to enforce it. The confusion, and Andy, I would counter the fact that, no, it's not the law. It's an order from the governor that hasn't been upheld in every legal venue it's been challenged in. And if you want to name somebody for it to come arrest, I'm willing.
Any other thoughts, questions?
The only other thing I might add, I don't know if you've looked at it or not, but there's 48,000 square foot on a football field. It makes much better sense to put the students in the stands where you can space them accordingly. You could single file them through the track to keep that distance. Social distancing in the progression into the stadium area and put the families out on the field. That's my only other observation.
Do you know how much seating? We'd have to look at that. How much seating we have in both sets of bleachers versus the amount of chairs we've rented? Or if we would be able to get that many more chairs?
Yeah, I don't think we'd be able to get more chairs. I mean, if, if we have a full crowd, you know, it's 2,500, we currently have, I'd have to double check our numbers. In the past, we've had 400 chairs inside, 400 chairs outside, but we knew this year we weren't doing inside. So I think we only have 400 chairs. So at this point, I can double check, but I think at this point, we wouldn't be able to get more, more chairs, but I can ask.
My, my only observation is the fact that the football field gives a better, a bigger area for the crowd. And if they need to bring their own chairs, I'm sure everybody would bring their own chair. It'll allow for more spacing.
I think we want to have them set up so we can control. I'm just thinking of baseball games now that my kids are all back playing baseball. And everybody brings their own chairs and they tell people to sit six feet apart from households and it doesn't happen, honestly, a lot of times at different venues. So I would be a little worried if, I would like to have the chairs kind of maybe know how many people are coming from a family and having a signed seat wherever we're putting them. So that we can ensure, because I think the last thing we want to have happen is if we don't keep that very controlled. And now we have all these people sitting together and, you know, pictures get out and I just think that would be bad.
And that was, that was a piece of the plan that Sheila appreciated, that we would have basically reserved seats in the stands for each family.
I guess my question would be, how do you control this after it's over? And I, you know, thinking about the photos that get out of, you know, swarms of high schoolers and friends and family getting together and thinking of, you know, that basically, based on science, is what they're saying is that Muirfield has decided not to have spectators. But yet we're looking at bringing this kind of group together. And, you know, can we truly do that safely according to, you know, the best science that's out there?
Well, and I think what we would do, and once again, talking to Sidney, they did say that, that after it was done, that they took the students and they got the students out and they basically just went inside the school and hid, is what they told me. Because they knew they could not kind of completely, you know, supervise that part. But, you know, we talked about loading in in waves. We could leave in waves. You know, that's some of the messaging I can do, you know, typically in the past, we've let people stay on the field for 45 minutes. You know, we'd have to say that, hey, we're going to exit you, we're going to exit all the students and then we're going to exit parents, you know, because kind of the thought is that in the stands, you know, kind of last name A through C are in one kind of quadrant. You know, D through whatever are in another quadrant. So what we would try to do is then try to exit them by those groups. I mean, it'll be a little bit of a mess, but I think that's the best way we could try to do it. And then just explain to them, hey, please help us on this. You're going to have to, you know, you're going to have to leave. I think kind of that Blues Brothers line, you know, you, you don't have to go home, but you can't stay here. Because they're still going to do their things, their parties, their graduation stuff. But, but I think if really trying to focus to get them to exit the football field would be our, our main idea. And I think if we do that and they're in the parking lot, they still might linger, but I think they're more likely to, to leave at that point.
I have no doubt that you guys have done tons of planning and it sounds like you've thought of so many different just different aspects of this to keep people safe. I guess Mike can spout the message that this would send.
No, if that was just me or everybody else, I'm sorry.
For me too.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just concerned about the message that this sends. We're expecting students to, you know, follow rules every day and in schools and kind of openly going against some kind of, you know, and I know like Doug said, I'm not sure exactly what this is and how much can be done authority-wise from the state or, you know, the governor or whatever. But and too, then setting people up to now all these kids are out on Saturday. And then they do go to other events and get into situations that aren't safe.
That happens every year. I mean, the opportunity for that happened. The kids go to the parties after graduation every year.
Oh, and I don't, I don't mean parties necessarily. I mean that as well, but just unsafe because of the virus. Because now groups are going to be together and then they'll continue to be together and then maybe they'll go party or hang out together. And if, and if we didn't do it, then maybe they would not.
They already are doing it. I've got two grandchildren that are in the graduating class and they all had parties over the last several weeks. The responsibility is each individual's responsibility. That's the basis of it. I mean, where do, what lesson do we want to teach them? Do we want to teach them that they are Americans and they do have a brain and now they are adults? Or do we want them to cower at every whim of the government's edict?
Doug, I personally don't see, you know, taking things like social distancing and wearing masks. I don't take that as cowering. I personally see that as being smart. I mean, there is a pandemic. It seems as though now, you know, numbers are kind of getting worse again. I personally just want to keep me and everyone I come into contact with safe. And I think, you know, we need to set a good example for our community.
I guess from my perspective, I definitely want to try to keep people as safe as possible. But there's another part of me that gets frustrated that on two fronts. One, tip, as typical, the, the challenge of wanting to make a decision, but actually stick to it and enforce it, I find gets left to the schools. And I find that those, those issues and desires and whims and nobody else has the guts to enforce are left to folks like us to deal with because they don't want to enforce them. And on top of that, I find it's insanely illogical that if we brought three cows and two goats to graduation and called it the Big Walnut Community Education Fair Celebration, that it would be a completely illegal event. And so I certainly don't want to do anything to put anyone else at risk in addition. But I also feel like the things that we're talking about doing go to far greater level than any public event that I've been to, including the grocery store, including baseball tournaments, et cetera. And, you know, I guess that's where, that's where I'm torn. I'd like to, I'd like to get in line and follow the guidance of the state the best that I can. But it just seems like a lot of these decisions aren't really about the science. And they're about who's going to make money and who's not going to make money. And I guess one of the things that has galled me and frustrated me about this process throughout is that the mental health and wellbeing of our students is like priority 2,976 to the state of Ohio and everybody else that's making decisions around these things. And one of the things that I've guessed, I've grown more acutely aware of over the last few months is that I don't just represent the taxpayers of Big Walnut, but I also represent the people that don't have a voting voice as well. And that's everybody that's a school-aged kid in our district. And so I guess where I'm, where I'm at is if the leading scientific expert in our area says that we have a plan that's solid, then I don't see why not execute on it.
Just give everybody a protest sign. Call it a protest graduation. You're set. They can do it down at the State House. They can close out High Street, so.
Steve, did you have anything you wanted to comment? I think you're, you're the only one that hasn't weighed in as of yet.
I respect greatly the thoughts of the board members. I also, again, I think it's probably a sign of the uniqueness of the time, the fact that our high school principal is reaching out to other high school administrators or officials to figure out how they're handling graduation and what lessons they learned through this process. I appreciate the diligence and foresight that everybody's kind of gone through to do this. At the end of the day, I don't know that the lessons that we teach our kids is as binary as, you know, do this and you're exerting your freedom or don't do this and it's a extension of fear or something like that. But I do also believe that at the end of the day, as a board and as a leadership team, the conference of diplomas is, you know, an essential part of this. And I know that if it's not in person, there will be a unique way done to ensure that that is appropriate, given all of the kind of standards and things that they have to think through. If we want to find hypocrisy, we're going to find it. It's going to be a matter of perspective and we're going to be able to see it. If the health expert thinks that this is the safest plan that we can come up with and it can be done in a manner that can be controlled and it can be done in a manner that can honor without taking away from kind of the prediction of what everything means. But I will support any plan that the administration came up with.
And the one thing I guess I would add is if we were sitting there at, what is it, level three or level four? And things were a lot more acute, I might have a different feeling about it. But we're not. And if you look at the maps that the county puts out,
We're not today.
We are. What's that?
We're not today.
I agree. And that, yeah, and that's what I'm saying. Like if, if that were to change or something, I'd have a different feeling perhaps, but, but we aren't today. And, you know, the vast majority of the cases, at least last time I looked on the health department website, are on the other side of 71.
I think looking at it that way, you know, Steve says, you know, we aren't today, but in two and a half weeks, could we be? And then at that point, are we left to, oh gosh, we now are to a place where Franklin County is. And with them being, you know, just to our south, that are we then, what do we do? Because we have reached that place in two and a half weeks. And, you know, and whether that happens, you know, I don't know that any of us know. But it's one of those things that, you know, if we were in the case where Franklin County is, I'd be like, there's no way we should be holding a graduation ceremony in person.
And see, that, I think that's where the, so that would be the one place where I might have some input because I would struggle there. From the standpoint that the same things, the only thing that Franklin County might be doing slightly differently than Delaware County, let's say, is then the requirements of what happens when you're in public space. I think the idea that this is outside, the idea that this is in kind of a space that would be not controlled by an air handler or an HVAC unit or something like that, that we're all learning more about as the facilities are being built. The fact that we're in kind of open air continues to make me more comfortable with it. And that's why I say, I don't know that I necessarily am thinking of that relative to the numbers where they are today versus where they could be in the future. If, if these other events are happening, such as grocery stores and weddings and county fairs. And, okay, so the golf tournament is limiting spectators, but there's still more than 200 folks that are going to be on a golf green between cameramen. Actually, I don't even know those numbers, so I shouldn't speak to that. But because of the safety precautions that the administrators have put in place, regardless of where the numbers sit today versus where the numbers would sit in three weeks, giving the good faith effort of moving forward with an outdoor graduation still seems in line with what we should be doing to mitigate this. Sorry.
I would. If I could also add one thing that kind of I went through my mind, just, just to share was, since the announcement was made about being able to bring all kids back to school and social distance the best we could, but essentially we can have over a thousand kids back in our high school in about a month and a half. So it's kind of, I just try to look at everything we're allowed to do. And then where does this fit in in terms of level of precautions and safety measures? And I would say it's probably what we've planned is more social distancing and more measures in place than anything I've done since quarantine's been somewhat lifted. So that's, I guess, where I have a little bit of level of comfort as I think, you know, we're bringing all these, all these other kids back to school soon anyway. And we won't realistically, I mean, if that's what we decide to do, we're permitted to, I should say, we won't be able to space them out quite as well as we would be at graduation in a regular school day and it would be inside. So that's where I feel like I have a little bit more level of comfort. I think we would have to really emphasize to our parents that it is absolutely critical that everybody follows directions and we, we don't storm the field. And, you know, we're really, if, if we decide to move forward, that we would be going out on a limb here and we would expect everybody to do their part to make sure that this is successful.
And one more thing to consider, you know, this is not, this is not required. So, you know, if someone doesn't want to do it, they don't have to. Like I said, we'll have it remote streaming. And then Angie threw out something that really I didn't think about yet that we could have. I probably wouldn't want to do that weekend with a, with an optional drive-through because Sunday's going to be our rain date. But we could, you know, plan something for the week or, or the next weekend if people wanted to then come through. I probably would have them do a form so we didn't set everything up, you know. We knew how many people were coming, but we could provide that as an option as well.
Yeah, I'm sorry to hit you with that this morning, Andy. Sheila actually shared that with me.
No, it's okay. I mean.
Her idea, which I thought was a good one, to give people that option if they weren't comfortable.
Yeah, no, I feel really good with all the things that we said and then that option that, that, you know, they, if they don't feel comfortable with it, they don't, they don't have to come.
What else would you need from us or, or in terms of trying to pick a direction moving forward from the discussion so far?
Well, I, I mean, it seems like it's a little Well, I I mean, it seems like it's a little split in thoughts and given the fact that we're looking, you know. At potentially going against a size order. I I would feel comfortable just knowing kind of as a board collectively that you're wanting us to move forward or not. Given the the nature of this situation. So I think I'm hearing three people saying yes and two people saying no, but I know we're not taking a vote on it, but I just kind of, and maybe that's, maybe we need to, I don't know. Just I for us to feel comfortable moving forward. I just want to make sure the board's comfortable.
Well, we can generate a resolution.
Or we can make a motion from the floor, which I'll do right now. The Big Walnut School District. Uh, continue with their in-person graduation on the twenty fifth of July.
Second.
Do I have a second?
I think I heard Steve's second.
I guess if you're looking for discussion, I guess I. As much as. I would want to have this graduation in person for these students, I guess I truly feel that. It's an unnecessary risk. Based on the science that's out there and. I just, I feel like that it becomes an issue that we can have all the controls in place to start this. Start this event, but I guess I'm concerned about once it's over with what happens and how you control because I. You know, I I've been to graduation and I see those masses of people rushing to the field and, you know, we we can reiterate that as much as. Possible, but I feel it, you know, as many controls as we have in place, once it's over with, people are going to do what they're going to do. And I guess I just look at the optics of that when we know that. There's an order out there that we're not supposed, we're not one of the exceptions and that we shouldn't have more than ten people gathering.
I would agree absolutely with you, Leanna, and the idea that. Once it's over, the lack of control and the idea that the kids will want to be around each other and those types of things certainly exist. Uh, one of my thoughts is in terms of the impossible predicament that Brad alluded to earlier. I would assume later this morning in this very meeting, we're also going to be talking about sending students back to school. Uh, so instead of impacting two hundred and fifty students, well, actually I'll make two points maybe here. One is uh, the idea of the in-person graduation is still not a requirement, so subjecting our people to risk. Uh, can still be determined at the family level. Son, you know, as a parent myself, daughter or son. We are not attending. We have that choice. Nobody's taking that choice away from us. Uh, I understand that you want to go, but Mr. Jados is offering a drive-through version of this. We're going to opt for that. So families still have that option to not attend. Based on those things because it would be two of. Opportunities for the same result to get my diploma awarded from my high school principal conferred by the board. The second thing that I would say in terms of impossible opportunities is later, we're going to talk about putting students in enclosed spaces. Uh, in classroom settings versus outside on a football field. And how that will be a requirement of some sort, again, not. Knowing what direction the leadership team is headed, but the governor has very candidly said. That schools should or have the option to reopen uh, coming up. So given that requirement that we're going to be talking about in terms of reopening school versus. The option of an outdoor in-person graduation. I I I see that those precautions are being taken and the options exist for families to make their own decisions. If this board were to give the guidance to the leadership team to have an in-person graduation.
I guess I would agree with Steve. I mean, it it's a congruence to. Where I think I've heard previously related to. Our committees discussions and the things that I've I've just heard about secondhand from those discussions. So I guess I I look at it the same way as. We're basically producing the same options that we're going to have on. Teen or whatever our opening date is versus. Three weeks earlier.
Well, one thing I do want to point out that I learned last night that we may want to just kind of keep in back of our minds as we move forward is. The the role of the police. Typically, we have them there for security and help and we have not talked with them. So I just want to. Throw out that disclaimer. Um, that that's one piece that I wasn't aware they were more the ones that were technically the enforcers on this. So just want to point out that. Uh, Andy and I have not. Talked to them yet, at least maybe Andy has. I don't think.
Well, yeah. We 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 have been in contact with them, but more of, I'm trying to remember the lieutenant or sergeant that we've. Had conversations with about having hiring officers there. So, you know, we haven't really given them the whole picture of, you know, what's gone on with the last week, but they they did know as of a week ago. We were still waiting to find out the decision and what they told us was depending on how short. Of a time, they didn't know how many officers they could give us, but that's the case. We go to Sunbury first and then always the Sheriff's Department. Um, but yeah, if 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 I get the the green light, I can, I can contact them right now and. And, you know, make sure that they're, you know, they would be, uh. They were on board or I can, you know, wait for Angie or whatever is needed. But yeah, that would be the next step for sure. But they they are at least Sunbury is at least in the loop. To a certain level, at least through that lieutenant.
I guess with that prompts maybe just a a point of clarification or at least a clarification. So when I hear Doug make the decision. To authorize you all to continue your plan. And that also means that that's subject for you guys to see something change and change course as well. I mean, that's kind of how I'm interpreting that motion. So that, you know, not that like this means come hell or high water, we are having an outdoor graduation in group. Um, you know, I think at least my understanding and feel free Doug to comment. I think what you're saying is you're giving the administration the latitude. To proceed as is, but it also allows them to make some changes if the situation arises, if I'm hearing you right.
Uh, the the motion is made today under today's situation. If it was, if. If uh. Stats. Take a severe downward trend and they close up the state, that might be a different. Situation, but. And yes, I would, I would say that the the motion grants the administration. The authority to adapt. To the circumstances on the twenty. Fourth, third, fifth, or third.
I would appreciate that, just given the timing and and where we are right now and the fluidity of the situation.
We don't know what tomorrow brings. So one way or the other.
Thank you for saying that because I just wanted to clarify and make sure we're all kind of hearing it the same way. And I wanted to, you know, I just want to make sure that I thought that was your intent, but I wanted to make sure that that was clear for everybody.
My intent was so that we would get a definitive answer to the administration. And like I say, if there's somebody that has to take the fall for it with the handcuffs, I'll keep Angie out of jail. And it's on the record, so.
Any other additional comment before I ask Jeremy to take a vote?
Bring me chocolates, Steve.
All right, I guess other than the request for chocolates, I think Jeremy, you're good to go ahead and call the vote.
Mr. Crowe.
Yes.
Mr. Fuji.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh.
Yes.
Ms. Lee.
No.
Mr. Schneider.
Okay, I think that still leaves us in the superintendent's report to talk about school year planning then, if I remember correctly.
Yes, so. Um, obviously, we finally had the announcement from the governor last week on. Thursday, heading into the holiday weekend, which was great timing after waiting for a month, but we got it. Um, if you didn't have a chance to read through the guidance document or listen to it. Um, it was very based upon the American Academy of Pediatrics recommendations and the governor even had the. Uh, one of the Ohio members leaders of that association speak at the press conference. Um, and it was very geared around. Why the pediatricians feel it's important to get kids back in school. For social emotional well-being, uh, more access to food. They talked about how reports of abuse are down fifty percent because there's no one to observe it and report it like there is when they're in school. Even though the reports of domestic and bi- domestic violence have increased with quarantine. So a lot of focus on those things, um, all obviously in addition to education and the. Uh, importance of getting kids back into an in-person environment wherever possible. So with that, um, they basically, it it was left fairly permissive and that we should try to social distance as much as possible. Um, he did make a recommendation that students, the grade, third grade and up should wear masks. They strongly recommend. And he did comment, the only um. Really mandatory thing in there was that staff members are still required to wear masks under the current requirement for all employees to wear masks. Um, when they can't be six feet apart. So. Um, I have a few things. We've obviously been working with our committee. We've kind of shared where the committee is. Uh, we looked at a hybrid, we looked at several hybrid models on our committee. And if we get to a point where we have to go hybrid, our committee felt like students going two days a week, the same cohort, the same two days. With that middle day off for cleaning and and teachers to work on the remote learning side. And then learning remotely two days a week was the way to go. But even with that being. The preferred hybrid model, we just really felt like it was really hard for families, especially working parents. Um, to be able to manage that. Uh, the committee members that were parents asked, you know, would you be able to get siblings together? And we said we would try, but probably can't guarantee that. It would be very hard, especially at the secondary level with different courses that that students may need. So we kind of got to a point where we have that backup AB model. Two day, two days a week if we need it. Um, but that the goal and the the feedback we got from the committee and. Primarily from the first survey was that that people wanted to be back full time if possible. So where we are in trying to finalize what that looks like is I need a little bit of guidance from the board. Before I can kind of finish a draft, I then want to kick it out to the committee for some final feedback. And then, um, we need to get something out to parents. My goal is to get something out to parents by the end of the week with just the basic concepts, but. I want to get a a survey, a Google form out to them where they can indicate their choice soon. Because we need to get our staffing done. So. Again, we're looking at one hundred percent in person or one hundred percent remote. We want families to have that choice. Um, kind of to Mr. Fuji's point earlier. So if there's, and I know we've talked about this before, but just to remind folks. If there's a a discomfort in returning for medical reasons or whatever reason there may be. We want to have that remote learning option. And they did just pass some. Uh, legislation around that. So we will be bringing a remote learning plan to you. At the next meeting to approve. It has to, we have to have a resolution approved and filed with ODE to be able to offer that. So that will be coming your way soon. I will tell you that, um, I had asked Jen to be at this meeting to talk a little bit more about that. She's been spending a lot of time researching remote learning. And she actually had a meeting before we even set this this date, you know, we were kind of. Late in setting it. Um, she already had a meeting scheduled with one of the providers. So we are looking. As we've talked with other districts, most folks are looking at getting a digital curriculum provider. Um, for the people that are going to be doing one hundred percent remote learning all year or for a semester at least. Um, just with the. Fact that those companies have already kind of vetted uh, that process with some of the issues that that we had, we just feel like it would be a better route to go. But we are looking at, um, from a staffing end, it just really depends on the numbers that we get. If we have, you know, we talked about, for example, an elementary teacher could could take fifteen third graders and fifteen fourth graders and could probably manage that remotely. But if we have five kindergartners and six first graders and. Eight second graders and, you know, and you start getting all those grades, all four subjects, um, that would be a lot to expect a teacher to be able to manage effectively. And so just looking at what's realistic and trying to set people up to be successful with our kids. So it's really critical for us to kind of get, um, the the survey results of what people want to do so we can plan staffing. Um, we do want to have teachers that are kind of overseeing, but how that looks and what that looks like will really depend on the number distribution. That we have for different classes. So, for example, if we had a high school course that only three kids wanted. Then we we wouldn't be probably having a teacher here do that. Um, just it wouldn't make fiscal sense for us. So those are the things that we'll need to work out. Jen has worked, has been working through that. She's also working on, uh, remote learning two point O with, we've got a team of teachers from every building. Um, all the principals are working with Jen on feedback. So they're establishing what are going to be the requirements if we all get put into remote learning at some point, which we know is a possibility. So we're ready to go for that. But we're also then looking at on a separate. Path would be people that elect to be in remote learning to start the year. So two different things we're kind of talking about there. Um, and in terms of the choice that people will have, we're going to ask them to choose between returning one hundred percent in person. Or starting the year and committing to at least a semester in in remote learning. Um, with that, we need to talk about what does in person look like? And this is where I need some some guidance from you. I'll start with the school. Calendar. I know that's the second item there, but they kind of go hand in hand. So in talking with my colleagues in the county. We all are are really leaning toward recommending a start of August thirty first for students. Um, still bringing teachers in at the same time, which would be August seventeenth. And looking at, um, the training piece with the remote learning, making sure that everything's ready to go. The other reason that. I was kind of on the fence, but the other reason this is attractive to me is how tight Prairie Run is. And I know we had a core meeting yesterday and Jeremy, feel free to chime in on that. Um, and I know Mark was in there as well. So they are putting together right now a a request for a time adjustment based on COVID. So we don't have that yet, but. Right now we're looking at, you know, can we get in there? When can we get in there as adults? When is it going to be ready to go for kids and and everything unpacked and ready to go? So the idea of buying a little time before we have kids in Prairie Run is is very attractive to me right now. I know Doug would tell you the same. Um, Doug Swartz, he's been begging for a later start for a while now since COVID hit. You know, at first I was very. Against that because it's like, well, let's get them, let's get them back as fast as we can in case there's an outbreak later. But I think with with the late announcement of what we're able to do, quite frankly, and I know a lot of the districts feel this way. Just having a little bit more time to finalize these logistics and get our teachers prepared. Um, I think makes a lot of sense. I know one of the districts is considering, and I think this is a is a good idea, but I haven't even talked to our team about it yet. Um, looking at that week of August twenty fourth and at least with the little kids kind of doing a staggered start like we often do with kindergarten. So you can bring in just part of the kids per day so we can really spend some time. On the hygiene and making sure they understand traffic flows if we're doing some, you know, different ways of moving in the hallway. All those, um. Things that'll be put in place that'll vary by building to try to make sure we're social distancing. So we talked about having the staff return on the seventeenth. Having kids possibly doing a staggered start the week of the twenty fourth and then going full on on the thirty first. With that, I know Mark, we had talked about maybe taking at least one of our PD days that's that's by Thanksgiving and maybe moving that as a possibility. It sounds like Bricker is working with ODE, one of our attorneys there on. We have enough hours, so this would not cut us. we have enough hours, so this would not cut us on minimal hours for the school year. But when the hours, when we first went from day requirements to hour requirements, they made a rule that you couldn't go less days because they didn't want people to just shave off a bunch of days on their year. But I know a lot of districts are considering this year just to have a little bit more front-loaded logistics time with staff because there's so much we need, so much more that we need to do with our, our teachers and other staff on the front end to get ready for how this is going to look different. So that's the first piece that, that I wanted to throw out for some discussion to see how you all would feel about potentially modifying the calendar start for next year. So I'll start with that and I guess get some, some feedback on where you might be with that or answering questions you may have.
Angie, by going with a staggered start to return, does that, and if we did take that second week, does that give us the opportunity to do like an Eagles first flight kind of thing at the high school in addition to getting those little kids in to show them, here's how the hallways work and we're going to go this direction if whatever.
Yes, that would be a really nice side benefit. And to be honest with you, our whole discussion at the county level was around teaching the kids those logistics, but I think that would be an awesome opportunity to, to still be able to do that and, and to do it in smaller groups, which would be helpful in terms of distancing.
With that start, Angie, is there any, and I guess not knowing the number of days or number of hours that are required and, you know, whether there's that legal component that you just mentioned, is it worth even looking at not bringing kids back until after Labor Day since we're, I mean, we would be looking at another five days out. So maybe that's just not possible.
We started there and then we felt like that was really long. So we felt like that was a good compromise to start on that Monday. And just a reminder, and we don't have a, a, a large number of students that go to the Career Center, but we do try to be aligned when we can. And we weren't exactly aligned this year because we were already pushed back a week from where some of them were because of, you know, we get that calendar creep. So that some of them were starting a little earlier than us anyway. I wasn't comfortable starting the week prior with, with knowing where Prairie Run would be. But we just felt like that was kind of a compromise between not going that late, but giving us some time. Everybody's feeling, everybody's pretty much in the same place. We are still trying to work out. We've had some ideas and thoughts in place prior to the governor's announcement, but now just finalizing, the staffing piece is huge. And so it would give us, it would buy us a, a little time to make any tweaks we needed there to not feel as rushed as to having to have that done. Other thoughts?
Yeah. So I guess the, the thought would be, let's say something similar to this year happens again where everybody's sent home. Does that put us in a position where we're likely to have to maybe try to add days, be them remote or in-person at the back end of the calendar to, to meet that requirement or?
No, no, sorry, go ahead.
You're good.
I was just going to answer that question. Sorry. No, that was the point that I made earlier about, so one of Bricker's attorneys, it's actually Nicole Donoski, she's the one that did the waiver that we're using for the sports. She's working with O D right now on, on that piece of not penalizing this year if we have the minimum hours in. But the remote learning would count as those hours as well, if everybody's forced into remote learning. And a lot of why we want to do this, there are two reasons with staff. One is to make sure that the staff's ready to go and understands everything for in-person learning that has to happen for help, to be health compliant. That's the first reason. The second reason is to do some P D with them and prep them. Because right now, if we were to bring them in, it's voluntary or we'd have to pay them. And we, as we know, we don't have extra money to pay to bring people in right now. So it would be days that they're already workdays for them that we can do P D and training to get them ready to go. So if we do go to 100% remote learning for everybody, that they're ready to go and it's not a repeat of what we had in the spring. So it would be the, the two goals there, but if we find out that we would have to make up days on the end, you know, I think that would be something we would want to revisit then if we would want to make that decision. And I'm not asking you to modify the calendar today, obviously, just want to kind of see where we are on it. And then I would want to get confirmation on what that does to the back end of the year and, and have that information for you before we would make a decision or ask you to take a vote.
That was really, I guess, my more, more my, what more where I was thinking was trying to figure out the impact on the back end. I, I've got no, I, I, I appreciate the thought process on the front end and I don't have any challenge with that personally. I was just trying to understand the, the second side of that, but if I'm hearing you're right, you're still sorting through that too.
Yeah, I, from what I'm hearing, we're, we're fairly confident that there won't be any implications, but I would want to make sure on that before I ask you to, to vote on it. Any other questions or thoughts on that? And again, not asking for a vote today, just want to make sure I know what concerns might be or, or what they're, so I can try to find answers for you.
Yeah, my question is, so no vote, no, you're asking for just kind of input and discussion on the topic of adjustment to the school year. So if you were to ask for a vote, then the earliest that you would be able to ask the five board members to vote on that would be the 23rd of July.
Yeah. So I kind of want to know in general.
Four weeks, is that three or four weeks before? Well, we have the 19th. Is that right? Am I right on this? The 19th is our first day on the calendar now.
Yep. So I would be looking for, I guess, a, a, a general thought right now. So I could tell parents that it's a possibility that we may be starting later. I wouldn't obviously want to commit to that until we took a vote and, and knew that. But I would at least want to tell them if that's a possibility so they could plan accordingly and be able to tell them why, obviously.
And, and just so that I can be clear as well, the why would be in planning for the potential of, again, a return to a remote learning workspace or whatever. So the why would be one, for further professional development to allow staff to do that. And two, to allow for staggered starts to meet guidelines and talk about the, the new normal or at least the 2020, 2021 normal of the start of school year. Those are the two kind of guiding principles.
But the first week before the staggered start would be training the teachers on that. So they have an understanding of, you know, what are, what are the expectations with hand washing? You know, when, when are we doing that? Making sure we have everything in place. Hey, we don't have any hand sanitizer here. Just, just kind of getting a chance to walk through, look at all those logistics, traffic flow in the hallway. You know, procedures for entering the lunch room that may change depending on the building. So yeah, it's an opportunity to, to have some time with them as a staff to work out those logistics, make sure they all understand as well before bringing in kids potentially the following week. And, and quite frankly, and again, this is kind of where we all, all are as a county, is it just also with the lateness of the governor's announcement, we were originally told it was coming in early June. It does give us a little bit more time to finalize logistics. And then finally, for us specifically, it does really help with Prairie Run Elementary with buying us a little bit of time prior to bringing kids into that building because it will be tight.
Angie, not so much on the calendar as it is on the discussion of the remote learning. Did I understand you to say that you were looking at contracting some of that distance learning out?
Not really contracting it out to a school, but buying a digital curriculum. So a lot of our teachers don't have the, they have lessons and, and.
The presentation would still be with them, boys. The curriculum, the digital curriculum.
Probably. So there is a potential for some courses where that might not be the case, maybe for a specialized course, depending on numbers. So Jen is, Jen is literally working on that and we'll have something for you at the next meeting. Because by then we'll know the numbers of people that have, are indicating their interest in remote learning. When we surveyed the first time, we know 15% of families were interested, but we didn't have it set up to break down by, you know what, my high school kid wants to do remote learning, but my elementary kid, I went back in school. So until we have those numbers and then we'll be able to give you a little bit firmer information on exactly what that plan looks like. We have a, a few different options and Jen's been working with her colleagues in the curriculum area with other districts and everybody's kind of in the same boat, vetting a couple of different providers, looking at depending on the numbers and the grade level. We would have a teacher, there would be somebody on our staff overseeing it, but would they be teaching using that curriculum? Or would they be overseeing lots of different courses? So that part, we're still waiting to kind of, we have some different ideas on that. And again, I, I talked to Jen about potentially canceling her meeting today to be here. Again, she'd already set that up before we scheduled this meeting and I felt like it was important for her to meet with that vendor this morning. So we will give you an update before the meeting on the 23rd. So you kind of know where we're leaning. But potentially right now, we're looking at asking people to complete the survey indicating their choice for in-person or remote learning by the 20th. If we can get that out by Monday, the 13th, it only gives them a week. That's kind of where everybody is right now, just because of, again, we don't have a lot of time. We didn't feel like we were able to put that out before and we had some tweaks to make once we found out what the guidance actually was. So I think we can get things finalized by the end of this week and ready to push out to families to make a selection. But the wording that we are, are looking at giving them is this option represents students learning at home. Big Walnut will partner with a virtual curriculum provider to deliver remote learning. Depending on enrollment, some courses or classes may be instructed virtually by Big Walnut staff. So as an example, if we have two students that want AP Calculus B C, you know, we might figure out a way to just have them join Mrs. Doc's class as an example remotely. So it, it's just really looking at, do we have 40 kids that need a class? Do we have one kid? Do we have five? Is, is really going to depend on how we structure that. So once we get that information, Jen will be working with the principals on how to kind of piece all that together. And then obviously, working with Mark from an H R standpoint of, you know, do we need to hire additional teachers where we're over in numbers? Or does that give us enough relief to do it a different way that we don't have to add teachers at the elementary where we're over limit right now? So we still have to build into the, the forecast, for example, for numbers. We're not hiring them yet because we're waiting to see what happens with remote requests.
And one other question, on the distance learning or remote learning, was it presented as a, here's your assignments to, or was it present, and I'm talking back in the spring? Or were the classroom, was it real-time classroom experience for the kids?
It was variety kind of all over the place. So moving forward, that was where we did the survey and we are looking to make it more, that was some of the feedback we got that they want more real-time. We were trying to not do a lot of real-time more videos and things because there was a concern about kids sharing Chromebooks. So for the remote learning next year, if people choose it, every student will be provided a Chromebook so that they can do things more in real-time. So that's where Jen's kind of looking at that survey feedback because, you know, we, we kind of were thrown into it in the spring. We weren't planned for it. There were some teachers that did that, some teachers didn't. So trying to take that survey feedback from the students, the parents and the staff. And that's what Jen's working on right now. So that's part of what we would do during that, those opening P D days is here are the requirements for remote learning if we all get put into it again so that everybody has that and it would look different than what it looked like in the spring.
I, I would make the observation that the one thing that everybody might be able to agree upon is that the new normal isn't the old normal. There's going to be a lot of, a lot of people working from home because it's, it's cheaper. So I think in the 21st century, it'd be safe to say that we ought to be gearing a little more to an education providing the ability to have an education system that's remote learning every year, not just when we have a COVID.
Yeah. So we haven't really been able to do that before by the state. So, you know, it'd be interesting to see what kind of flexibility will be provided moving forward. But certainly, as I said, we do have a team working on trying to take all that feedback and best practices and working with other districts on their best practices and what they learn to try to obviously improve it. You know, our goal is to make it better as we move forward.
Well, I know there's been online education for quite a while. So how could, why couldn't the district provide it as well? You say that it shouldn't do it before.
Correct. Because the, those were online schools that did that. There are some districts that had a, a hybrid model that was approved and kind of grandfathered in. But a public school couldn't just offer a, a complete, we haven't, we haven't been able, there's been a blended learning option that schools could apply to do, but they actually just passed this remote learning in that last House bill that went through. The new option for us to be able to do. And again, after the pandemic, I don't know if it will still be an option or not. To your point, I think a lot of people are, even companies, you know, maybe more open to people working from home. So it might be an option moving forward, but it wasn't previously. Sorry, Steve, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no problem. You were, you were doing a good job answering the question. Coming back to the calendar though, I hear you, I think, saying that there are some new considerations for the delaying of what is currently on the calendar. My question is, are we in a spot now to say that we're, are we still even given Doug's maybe conversations with you behind the scenes? Are we still in a position to be able to open school on the calendar dates that we have set?
We are technically, it will be tight and they'll have to be doing some punch things while kids are, more punch work while kids are in there. And I, literally, we just had a meeting yesterday and they are supposed to be getting us, you may remember, they talked about they can ask for additional money or additional time as, as progress is. And they want to ask for additional time. We've not gotten an actual request in writing of how many days that is. So right now we're still looking at being able to get in at the very end of July. I will be surprised if that, if that holds after the next, the next week.
My memory serves, it was the 29th that we would get in and, and receive the keys. But you're saying that might get better.
Yeah, it's fluctuated within a few days of that. I know the casework has started to come in, but I don't think we have all of it. And then obviously there's the plumbing that has to happen with sinks in there. At the elementaries, a lot of our classrooms do have sinks in them. That's part of our, our hand washing piece. You know, we can get around it with hand sanitizer and, and going to the bathroom. But it would be nice to have all the, the casework and sinks operational in the classrooms before the kids are there, possible. So I think it'll be some of those, not necessarily mission critical pieces, but things that'll need to be finished up in evenings and on the weekends, once the kids are back in. The more of that we can front-load, obviously the better.
Thank you. And so what I think is that on the one hand, the mission critical essence of the calendar is still in place and could for this moment in time still be ready to be delivered upon. But because of now all of the other circumstances that are coming to bear, the option for the district and for the benefit of students might be to delay by up to two weeks. No, or is it one full week and a partial week, the opening?
We're supposed to start on the 19th, which is a Wednesday. So, and, and staff is supposed to start on the 17th. So it would be those three student days that week. And then the following week, we would look at the staggered start. So they would be missing three, three student days and then whatever days they're not in on stagger, so potentially four. So it'd be seven school days.
Thank you.
I guess the only other thing that Steve didn't mention there is there is the alignment with the Career Center as a target throughout this as well. So there is a possibility if we didn't adjust and everybody else. As a target throughout this as well. So there is a possibility if we didn't adjust and everybody else did. We'd have our Career Center students kind of. Not, not off schedule, but running a different schedule, if I'm hearing you right.
Correct.
I think the plan is really good. I like having the time for the teachers to um, do some development and, and learning on the. You know, sanitary and hygiene and new protocols and things as well as the digital learning, I think. Um. It's going to be, there's going to be a lot of changes for our students when they go back to school. And so I think part of. Um, part of, you know, that expectation setting lies with the family. Hopefully. Parents will be doing some of that with their kids as we lead up to school starting, once they get some more direction from um, what, what the plan is. Um. But I think, you know, our teachers are going to have a big role in that too, and we can't. Expect our teachers to make the students comfortable if, if the teachers. Aren't comfortable and don't have a good understanding of what they're doing and, and kind of have that, that sense of like, okay, I got this, so. I think it's, I think it's a really good plan.
Thank you. And we would obviously be working with our team. On. On determining what, what training would be needed for the staff and making sure that that's delivered.
You know. I would be for staggering the start, getting teachers all that information, education that they need before we start and. Breaking it down into those smaller groups for the teachers to work with those smaller groups of students on that stagger start. But I think one of the things that Sherry brought up is I also think it's important that as soon as we know. Some of those expectations that we're going to have for our students coming back, that we're relaying those to families. So just like Sherry said, that. Families can start working with their kids at home to say, these are the kind of changes you're going to see and, you know. Just kind of laying some of that groundwork, so it's not so shocking for some of those kids coming in that, oh my gosh, I have to do this or, you know, whatever it might be.
So I, I think I'm hearing an, an overall favorable um, vibe toward that type of a calendar. So if you're all comfortable, I would like to communicate in our plan that it is likely that we would be looking at that type of schedule and then. Um, I will confirm about what it does to the backend. That's the one piece that I don't know yet. And then I would be looking to bring that calendar modification to you as a recommendation at the July twenty-third board meeting. Is everyone comfortable with that? Okay. Brad.
The only thing I would add is I would just reemphasize the Gilbane that that doesn't change our expectations on them for delivery.
Absolutely. Yeah. I don't even know if they need to now. We told them again yesterday, nineteenth, that's our start date, so. Yeah. I agree. Okay, the next item that I want some feedback on. Is um. Is masks. So I would like some feedback on that. Um, our initial survey, we did, we did ask about, you know, coming back. If you're wearing masks or not wearing masks. Um, I know. The recommendation is third grade and up that the governor made. Some people have talked about having different areas that you, that you wear them in, so common areas. Uh, most people are looking at requiring them on the buses. And it looks like we are able to bus using our normal busload of students, uh, numbers. But with the mask piece, so that was something that we've talked about internally. I wanted to get some feedback on, so. Requiring them on the bus, if people don't want their student to wear them on the bus, you know, they certainly could look at self-transport if they're not comfortable with that. Um. So I would like feedback on that and then on what your thoughts are. We know staff members have to wear them. He did talk about, which was one of my initial concerns. Um, you know, if you can maintain six feet that if you're teaching a world language or, you know, we talked about phonics to little kids where any, anything with language where it's really important for the student to be able to see. How the teacher's moving his or her mouth, you know, where with enunciation um, would be critical. That they could not wear one, or we've also talked about a face shield. Um, but then what is our thought for, for kids? Some people are looking at, you know. When you're in that classroom with that group that you're with, we're going to space you as much as we can. Not making them wear them in that classroom, but they have to wear them in the halls where they're closer to people. Common areas, basically, where, where you have a little bit denser crowds. So just wanted to kind of, obviously that's a hot topic. And before we um, put something out to our committee to get feedback on, I, I wanted to make sure that. You know, whatever we're putting out, that the board has a, a comfort level with, or that we can at least have a discussion about it.
I, I don't know that I'm. I guess I have another question related to that, I guess, to talk about, you know, we've spent a lot of time. And I know you've put a lot of focus into things like flexible seating and small groups and things of that nature, and so. Can you kind of speak to the mask impact from what you've heard related to those kind of concepts versus everybody's? Sitting in a row kind of traditionally, how I think a lot of people envision a classroom typically?
Yep, so that's a great question and I actually, when we did our superintendent meeting, and I have a meeting, all the superintendents are meeting with Sheila again tomorrow. So um, I have a list of some, some follow-up items for her, but I brought that up the last time we met and said. You know, we don't have a lot of individual desks anymore and we're certainly not going to go out and buy them, you know, the, the expense of that would, would just not be worth it for a year. Um, so with tables, we're not necessarily going to be able to, you know. Push desks apart, but kids considered each end of a table, but it may not be six feet. And she said, you know, I, I think the idea is that you're doing everything you can to distance them as much as possible. And so I, I also said at that point to her, you know. We're not realistically able to. Get smaller classes than what we have right now. We don't have. Um, tons of extra classrooms, especially at the secondary level. We don't have extra classrooms sitting around. It'll help a little bit with opening prayer run this year. Um, but I'll be honest with you with enrollment. You know, until we get B W I opened as an elementary, it's not like we're going to have a, a ton of wiggle room there. Um, so we don't have a ton of extra spaces and with our financial situation, we cannot afford to go out and hire a bunch of teachers. To get these small class sizes. And she said. Well, then you just do the best you can and. Do work within what you're able to do. And, and really the governor's recommendation was. To the, you know, to the biggest extent possible. It was, it was following along that same line of. Doing what you can. So I can tell you right now, we're not going to have classes at thirteen and we're not going to be able to. We're just, we just don't have space for that and we don't have the staffing for that. So within a classroom, we will push desks apart, tables apart. Um, but the idea I've, I've heard talked about is. Instead of allowing kids all over the classroom all period like we typically do, um, it may be that, you know, you, you, these four kids like to sit at a high-top table, so they're at the high-top. And they sit with those three kids every day or those two kids or whatever the, the number is. Um, with the idea being you're, you're kind of limiting that close contact. With a smaller group of people. Um, typically at our elementaries, we do a lot of like morning meetings on the rug, so we probably. Wouldn't. Do that. We would keep them spread out because typically you have the entire class on a little area rug. So things like that, I think we would have to adjust for this year, but, you know, I don't, I don't see us going back to desks. Um, one of the other options I've seen, and again, these are all the kinds of things I'm looking for your thoughts and guidance on, but. Um, they, they make shields that can go around an individual student that's acrylic. Um. So that, that would be an option if we wanted to do that and not masks. Um. So lots of different ways to address that. Some districts that I've seen that have put things out already. No one in our county's put anything out yet because we're trying to kind of work through this final. Guidance and how to handle. Some of these things. But I have seen a few things where they've just put out exactly what the governor said. We highly recommend students in grades three and up wear masks, but they aren't requiring as a district. Um, I know at least one district in our county is planning to require it. Uh, the other two are kind of where, where I am like, yeah, we need to talk about that with our board, not sure exactly where we want to add on that. So. Any thoughts?
I think based on the governor's recommendation and um. The recommendation that came out through the K twelve restart and what the American Academy Pediatrics is looking at. Is kind of based on those grade levels of at what age can a child. Wear a mask and in which settings? And I guess, I don't know that I'm ready to say that every kid in, you know, from third grade and up all day in a classroom should wear a mask. But I do think that, you know, some of those busier times of the day where we can't necessarily control. Kids coming in and out of the building and they're in a larger group, whether they're wearing a mask when they come into the building, when they. They wear a mask when they exit a building, when they're in the hallway, they're wearing a mask and kind of. Focusing on some of those guidelines that the experts and the science is saying that, you know, we should. Have those children wearing masks. And I guess the other, the other issue I have is that. You know, everybody's saying it's not really to, to protect you, it's to protect others. And what are we doing to protect our teachers? And the teachers are required to wear a mask or a face shield, whatever it might be, but yet. We're not requiring all those children who are coming in contact with our staff and making sure that we're keeping them safe. Um, because especially if we have to go to that hybrid model, our small pandemic response group, you know. Kind of talked about the fact that the teacher is the linchpin in all of this and keeping our teachers healthy. That if we would have to go to a two-one-two model kind of thing, that um. You know, making sure that they stay healthy and stay in the classroom or else all of those kids are out.
I agree with Leanna on that comment, especially that last part about keeping our teachers safe. Um. I mean, we know that there's a lot of. People out there, I guess, who can be asymptomatic, but that doesn't mean that they can't pass it to other people. And I think one of the things to consider is that. You know, if this becomes, oh, it's optional, then it comes down to each kid or each kid's family, but. The family, you know, is not going to the school with the kids. So no matter what the parents say. Um, the parents aren't with the kid at school, so when they get to school, it's up to them to be wearing a mask. And I think it puts a lot of peer pressure on kids if it's not something that's required in common areas. Um, I don't necessarily think that it needs to be an all-day, you know. Everywhere that you're at in school, like, you know, when I'm sitting at my desk in my office um, at work, I don't have to wear a mask. But when I go to the copy machine, when I go to the restroom, when I'm interacting with other people in the hallways, I need to wear a mask. And, I mean, I think it, it makes good sense. Um. And I, I just think we're protecting our kids from having to make those decisions and deal with peer pressure if it's something we require of them rather than just suggest it.
How, how are we prepared to supply masks? You know, if we make it a requirement, I mean, I know we have kids in our district that. Um, we have people out of the kindness that are hard that are buying clothes for them so that they could be properly clothed and. And even like personal care items to help them, you know, bathe and things of that nature that they don't get at home, so. I guess. If we go required, then how? How prepared are we to supply masks to those that, that even if they wanted to, they're not getting them at home?
Mark or Jeremy, um, feel free to chime in on this one as well, but I know we've had several. Different vendors that we've looked at if we get to a point of needing to provide. I know we've bought some already for staff. Um. Obviously, it's a big expense to do for the whole year for everybody. We have some on hand for staff. Off when we had them come in at the end of the year, end of the last school year to clean out things. Um. We asked them to wear one if they had one and, and had them available if they didn't, so it would probably be. A similar thing. Um, I know the governor mentioned in his press conference that. He would be allocating some of the CARES money to us for that, but. It's kind of similar to what happened last year where we're probably going to get a state cut, which I know Jeremy's going to talk about. Um, so other funds are cut, but we would get money for masks and hand sanitizer.
I think my, my only addition to that is that we um. I know there's been talk at various different levels um. That if, if it's possible for either a state purchasing. Program possibility for all kinds of um. Uh, these items we might be needing or for districts going in together. To try to purchase these in, in larger bulk masses, but I know a lot of us have still been waiting to see. You know, what, what does school look like? Because if we're, we end up being remote, then it's, it's not necessary, so. Um, I think partly. Uh, with. Finalizing our plans and hearing what the governor had to say, it allows us to begin kind of putting more of these things in motion. Um. As part of our planning for the, the amount of money that we did get, uh, we are reserving some dollars to be able to buy. Hand sanitizer, masks and supplies from the CARES dollars as well, so. Um. I think, I think there's still. Uh. Very short window here, but uh, various things that will um. Be trying to get those in place that those students who do need masks that we can help provide those.
I guess where I sit on this is um. I've, as I mentioned earlier, I am. I am frustrated by the fact that. The, the health and well-being of our kids beyond being considered as potential spreaders has been ignored relatively by the state, in my opinion. And um, for me, the most important thing is, is to get them back with their peers, back with their teachers, back in a normal flow. And if the price of that is wearing a mask or if the ability to continue that is wearing a mask. Um. Then I would be okay with that in that context. If. For me, the most important thing is to keep our kids in the building as long as humanly possible, no matter what else is going on around us. And I appreciate the, the different angles that folks come with on this, but if, if we feel like that this gets us the best chance to have a, a, a full school year. With people in the building, teachers, staff. You name it. Um, then I'd be good with it.
I agree, I agree with uh, Leanna who kind of kicked off the conversation. I agree with Sherry, Brad. Uh, I also would throw out there that. I, I don't even really see it as a question if this is the recommendation of the C D C, if the governor is strongly recommending it. You know, we, board members for generations have voted on codes of conduct and uh. Gosh, uh. Dress and behavior guidelines, that this seems like, for whatever reason, to me, a no-brainer, wear a mask. And uh, as the Big Walnut community has always done, uh, whether it was eyeglasses from the Lions Club that get donated or whether it's. Coats from friends who share, uh, I'm confident that if a mask is part of the required. Uh, daily activity of school, then there will be ways that people can step up and assist, uh, as they always have done in our community. I would also believe that, given the fact that it's for safety reasons. Uh, it would be that much, not enforceable, but it would be that much more understood and if there has to be a sales effort into some community or some portions of the community or some families as to why. This is a safety measure, I would also have no problem uh, standing and delivering on that and supporting the administrators who are making that stand.
I'd just add that one of the things that Angie said at the start of this discussion, I guess I feel like are real reasons to get these kids back to school, that, you know. The mental health, the social emotional well-being of our students, the food security, the safety of our students. And if we're able to, you know, as Brad and Steve have both said and Angie, or and Sherry too, that if we're able to keep kids in school as long as possible. Buy them wearing masks and hopefully limiting the spread, I think it's a small price to pay to be able to continue to educate kids and pro- prevent that. You know, slide in learning that, you know, people have. There are studies out showing that how far these kids are falling behind already just because of the couple months. And if we're able to get them back in the classroom and do those things, I think we need to do.
just because of the couple of months. And if we're able to get them back in the classroom and do those things, I think we need to do everything we can to get them there. And if, um, American Academy Pediatrics is, you know, recommending this, I think we follow their guidance.
So are you all comfortable then with third grade and up? Since that was what was recommended? I know there's been a big concern with, um, the little kids of just keeping them on, not messing with them. And obviously the language acquisition piece there.
Well, and I think too, whatever we can do, Angie, as far as the face shields, um, you know, if we can figure that out from a teacher perspective for, I think the governor particular, in particular carved out, you know, for the foreign language learning and our kids, you know, the teachers wearing those face shields. I mean, I'd almost be in favor of if we can go the rap, that route, offering the opportunity of all staff to do the face shields instead of the masks, just because there's so much in those facial expressions that I feel like are important for the teachers to be able to convey to their students that are lost, you know, behind the mask, but not sure whether those provide the kind of protection that, um, our staff need. So that'd be the only question I would have.
That's on my list for Sheila tomorrow because I know when we met initially, she said she did not see the shields as a substitute for masks, but I know they were, the governor mentioned that could be a substitute. So just kind of want to see if she has any other thoughts on that.
Would the thought be in terms of third grade and up, an exception for maybe some of our students with, um, special needs and whatnot where that may not be necessarily medically in their best interest, that would be an exception to that?
Yeah. And that was in the guidance recommendation as well. So I think the idea is if a student isn't able to remove their own mask personally, that, that, that that's not a good idea to have one on them. Any other thoughts on, on masks? Again, I'm planning on kind of tweaking what we have here and I will send it uh, to you as well as to our committee for some feedback before we send it out to families. And then we're planning on just putting a, a piece on there. I can tell you, um, some of the districts are looking at, uh, using the term crosswalking over the different levels of it being in school to the county color system that was just put in place. So obviously, um, Franklin County is red. So a lot of them are looking at starting in a hybrid model. But, you know, as we talked about it in our county group, you know, Buckeye Valley and, and us probably would be yellow if we didn't have the other part of the county right now. So we didn't want to make it solely connected to, you know, I think it's something we have a conversation about and have different things we're looking at, but we didn't want to just say, hey, if we had a certain color, we're going to a certain mode of delivery. We think that we need to look at what's actually happening in our community. So if we're seeing more cases in our community and our buildings. So I'm looking at language to say, students may be switched to remote learning if COVID-19 conditions worsen in a building or throughout the district, or if mandated by the state. And then I think our team will be monitoring and in discussion with you on that. But I don't want to just say if we, you know, if we turn red, we're going to remote learning when maybe our side of the county is really not as impacted as everything on the other side of 71. So just want to make sure you were comfortable with, with the concept of and maybe, maybe we do want it real cut and dry for this color, we do this, but I, I was trying to leave a little more latitude to be able to look because we may even have an outbreak in a building. You know, and maybe that building goes to remote learning, but the rest of the district doesn't. Anyone have any thoughts on that?
I personally wouldn't want us to tie ourselves to a, um, rating system of some kind that's not measuring us specifically.
I agree with Brad. Uh, Delaware County, the west side of Delaware County is in a much different state than we are. As a matter of fact, uh, Kellyton Health Department was at last night's township meeting. And Kingston Township finally has a case of COVID.
Hmm.
Four months.
Yeah.
And I'm glad to see it's not you or Sheri. The point being that you can't judge the whole county, but can't judge our school district by the numbers represented by the whole county. You might ask Shelley if, if they can assist in uh, informing the districts of the im- the current impact in their district by breakdown.
Yeah, we've gotten periodically, um, we get the county numbers, but we've also gotten it by township and village, which is helpful.
Can they do it by district though?
I don't know.
They can, uh, Doug, if you go out and look at their, uh, the county's website, and I don't know if they do it daily or weekly, but I, they update it definitely by, um, jurisdiction in terms of township or village. And I think maybe, no, it's, I was going to say maybe by zip code. I'm not sure about that. Uh, but I know you can look and see how many are in Genoa Township or Sunbury, et cetera. And they have a map that represents that.
Well, they vaguely represents it. In other words, I believe that the phrase is, uh, one to five.
Correct. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a range. That is a true statement.
Right. It's, which is very definitive.
I agree.
I, oh, I'm sorry, Sheri. But on point, yes, I agree that we need to be looked at individually. I apologize.
That's fine. I, I was just going to say, I, I agree with that as well. We can always kind of be more strict about it or be, you know, tighter if we feel like it's necessary, but I think it's easier to go that direction than the other. So.
Yeah, I would be curious to see how, um, how broken down we can get that information from the health department. Because when you look at like Genoa Township, I'm not sure how much of Genoa Township feeds into our district. I know it's not a huge portion, but you know, they're also in a spot that I feel like their colors are hard to tell, but it's either 21 to 50 cases or greater than 50 cases in Genoa Township. And I know we do have some students there. So if we can get that information broken down more based on our school district, I'd certainly prefer to follow that. Then that general county as a whole kind of guidance, if they're able to provide that to us.
I think when we asked before, they weren't able to, but I, I just put it on my list for my meeting tomorrow to ask, to just double check that. All right. I just want to make sure. So if you saw other districts put, putting out there, you know, hey, if we're this color, we're doing this, that you kind of understood where I was thinking on that and, and wanted to make sure we were aligned. So that's helpful. So those are the big pieces. I think the rest of this, we've already talked about, and it's a lot of the actual logistics of, of, uh, implementing this, but those are the, the big pieces I needed feedback on. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Is there, uh, are you, is the district going to implement when the, the kids, and this would be extremely difficult to do. But to check on the wellbeing of the kids as far as temperatures. I know in the past, when we didn't have COVID, a lot of kids came to school sick. Last year, I believe, uh, Harrison Street was almost at an epidemic level with the flu in January. So are we going to do testing as they enter the building? And if so, if we find a child that is carrying a temperature, uh, what's going to be our action?
Okay. So we are not looking to screen every kid when they come in. We are going to ask families to do self, um, assessments of symptoms, which would include temperature, but also any other of, of, of a COVID symptoms. And obviously that would be part of that piece that, you know, we sent out last year, but would be continuing to educate them on what that is. If they have any of those symptoms, then we're going to ask them to stay home, both students and staff. Once they're there, um, and Megan Truax, our, our district nurse and, and Dom Beam, a school nurse would be working with, um, with the health department on this, but the recommendation is that we have a separate clinic area that they would go to. You know, it's easier in some, we don't have like two clinics, so it would have to be that clinic. Um, but they would, they would be in there until they could be picked up at that point. So it would be, you know, if, if they do have a, a temperature automatic or any symptoms removed from the rest of the class and um, put in there. So we're working through, that's part of what we're doing with, with the nurses with, um, with the health department. So now that we know we, we can go back and what that looks like, um, those specific logistics of, of exactly what that looks like, we're working out with them. Um, but from what I gather from my colleagues, no one, at least in Delaware County, is planning on trying to do a temperature check on every kid. Just logistically, that would be pretty hard. Um, we did talk about if we got, if the county got, you know, maybe if we felt like numbers were getting higher, that we might implement that, but with where we're, where our numbers are right now, we didn't feel the logistics of that um, was something we wanted to tackle.
Well, that might tie in with, you know, knowing the number of cases in the, in other words, the different levels at some level, you might want to initiate that.
Yeah. And we'll know in our school, like they'll communicate with us on that. I just don't know if they have the capacity to break it down with all of our residents by school district. So we'll know if we have a case in our school, they'll let us know. We just may not know every individual in the community, obviously that has a case. But no, we are not planning unless, unless you all feel strongly about that and, and want me to work through logistics for taking temperatures. We were not planning on doing that. We were planning on asking families to self-assess at home. And, and we do know that not everybody's probably going to do that, just like they, uh, have sent their kids sick to school for years. Um, but again, if you give Tylenol and it takes the fever down, we wouldn't know that anyway.
Did anybody else just lose Angie on that or is it my internet?
I heard her. I heard her.
I, Lan, I just said, can you hear me now?
I can. Thank you.
I just said that we were not planning on, um, doing the temperature unless maybe numbers get worse, we could revisit. And we realized some people may still send their kids, put them on Tylenol, they wouldn't have a fever anyway. So unfortunately that's harder to control.
Okay.
I think the other thing, just from some of my other experience with, with businesses in the area that have had, uh, had had people contracted is that if I understand from the county health process, right? And Angie, you may be able to, to speak to this from your discussion with Sheila. But if I understand their process correctly, when somebody tests positive, their contact tracing process communicates to people that have been formally identified as a contact. And they've got their own criteria for what that looks like. And then those people are asked to quarantine for 14 days. Um, and so we may end up having people not, not with us for a two week period just because maybe somebody that they were close to has, has, has achieved or has, uh, contracted the, the symptoms, um, and tested positive as well. And I think we wouldn't as, would, I guess, my question related to that would be is, well, I know we'd be notified if we had a positive test. Would we also be notified if somebody was a notified contact?
I don't know. I'll find out. I'm adding that to my list.
Okay.
I do know they don't automatically, any person they've been around is automatically a contact if it's in a certain length of time or certain type of exposure. I do know that.
It's 15, it's either 10 or 15 minutes. I can't remember the, the measuring stick they're using.
Mm-hmm. So part of what we're working through and that, again, that time on the front end is, you know, how, how do we help support our teachers and supporting kids that may be in and out for a couple of weeks at a time? What does that look like? We know we're going to see a lot more of that than we typically would. So that's part of what we're, you know, trying to work through on how to support with that.
Are there any aspects of school, like any specials or anything like that, that there's concern about the, about being able to do like, uh, physical education or band or choir or anything like that?
Yeah, I was talking with the, um, and that's something that I think working through with those teachers, but we brainstormed some different ideas. Um, you know, for us, if you think about high school band and it's one period because of, of them practicing together. Um, and so, and I haven't even talked to Andy about this one, but one of the, the ideas we talked about was, you know, might be that some of those kids are in a, a study hall type environment while the teacher's pulling a section or two and they can spread out. Um, obviously when it's nicer outside, they can go outside and, and be able to, to distance and and not be in, you know, the difference of being outside versus in a contained area. But once weather dictates that they be inside, I think it might be looking at, you know, can we put them in, kids in the auditorium maybe that are not in that section and, and just happen to do more section work? Um, and, and however many sections we can fit and spread them out, but concern obviously about kids sitting three inches apart and I'm blowing into an instrument right now. It's not, not a great idea. Um, so those are some things that, um, that we do need to work through. But we've talked a lot about groups, having, having groups doing things. Um, I think with PE, it's looking at the guidance that's out there for contact and non-contact sports and how to, um, handle that in a similar way to what we're doing. I think if, if people would want to opt out of that this year, you know, we would make that an option. Um, the only time that you have to have some of those credits is at the high school level. But if a student typically would take PE at a ninth grade year and they're not involved in sports where they can waive that requirement, you know, certainly they could wait and take that class next year or as a junior. So I think being flexible with some of those things, if people don't have a comfort level, but trying to look at, um, you know, what are the current governors' orders around the different sports and trying to treat that in a similar way? Same types of precautions. And that's part of what, just trying to, you know, obviously we've had some discussion, but now that we know what we're allowed to do, just trying to kind of finalize some of these logistics. And I can certainly update you as we kind of work through some of those things. Obviously it'd be nice if we were in our new high school to be able to spread out a little bit more. So space is certainly, um, out of all the buildings, I think that'll be the, that building will be the biggest challenge this year. You know, when you think about the size of our band and how many spaces are there then to put the rest of the kids? Is there already a study hall in there? You know, just having to move some of those things around and work with that, but those are all things that are on our list to work through. The other thing that, um, nobody seems to really have completely figured out, but we've had some dialogue around and I wanted, I saw my list for Sheila tomorrow is the playground equipment. You know, what does that look like between, what does recess look like? You know, coming to a, a consensus about how we want to do that, um, use of playground equipment, what does that look like? Sanitizing type protocols for that. You know, I think at the end of the day, there's also the, we've talked about sanitizing and, and maybe doing a miss type thing on the buses between routes, but a lot of the, the sanitizing, we also have the logistical challenges of what staff we have to work with, what timeframe we have to work with between routes. Um, so those are all things that we'll have to consider as well. So we have a huge laundry list of those types of things that we're, we have lots of ideas, but haven't made final decisions on. Any other questions for me?
So other than that, just a regular summer.
Yeah. It's been a great summer. Let me tell you. Great summer. Um, so we will work on tweaking what we have. Like I said, we'll get it out to you as well, through our committee for some feedback. And then, um, my hope will be to, to get this out to families, definitely a, a general summary by Friday, if not the entire piece of here it is, make your decision. Um, but want to get that out by early next Um, but want to get that out by early next week at the latest because we really need to know what people are doing so we can work on staffing. That's a huge puzzle that, um, I think I mentioned last meeting, we're all planners and this is normally done and, and we're all starting to, to panic. So just need to, need to know. And unfortunately, we're not going to be able to give, that's why I want to at least share by the end of the week, here's what's coming. Um, we're not going to be able to give families a ton of time to, to make their selection because of the implications on staffing and logistics that we have to figure out. And that's again, where having that little extra time on the front end of school year would help because certainly we, again, we were promised this guidance back the beginning of June. So it took a, an extra month and that's a month that we have lost. And being able to figure out then how to react.
Angie, one final, one final question about, um, about the school year. Has there been thought about clubs or some of the different, um, after-school type things? Is it going to be a, you know, it's hard enough just to figure out the logistics of school, so we're just going to figure this out and we're not going to have some of those other things? Or is it going to be like, we're trying to be as normal as possible, so we're still going to have all of these after-school clubs or different organizations and they'll just have to try to figure out those logistics on their own and how do we monitor that? Or what's, what's the thought there?
Yeah, and we have started to have some of those conversations. Um, we, we do pay some stipends that are not part of the contract to, to have some of those. And so we've talked about, you know, um, just kind of looking where we are fiscally and are we able to do all those? So I know Mark's been kind of looking at that. But I, I think from my standpoint, those are the things that when we talk about the, the social emotional state of our kids right now, um, those are the things that, that are important to them, um, that do make them feel a little more normal. So I think as many of those things that we're able to offer, it's, a lot of them, it's going to be similar protocols to what we're doing in a classroom. But, um, being able to offer as many of those things for our kids as possible, I think is, will be helpful in helping their, their mental states and, and getting them to feel a little bit more normal. So I think by building, you know, when we do our retreat this year, um, it's going to be a, a lot less time, you know, typically we're really focused on leadership skills and developing those. And there's a, there's some logistical work that we do. But we've already talked a lot of our retreats. It's going to be logistical work, but us being there and able to work, work with the principals through a lot of these issues so that we can um, figure out, and it may look different by building, just depending on their environment or, or different clubs that they have. So trying to work through as much of this as we can over the next month. Anything else? All right, as we start working through this, I will continue to update you through email. And then obviously we have our meeting on the 23rd where we should have a lot of things worked out and refined, but I'm sure we'll still be working on some of it again, just giving the, the late nature of all this. So I know that was a long conversation, but, um, very important for us and our planning and moving forward. So certainly appreciate all your input there. I think that's all I have today.
Well, thank you very much for all of that. And I appreciate the, uh, the multiple pivots, research, discussions and everything that, that this, that the administration's doing to try to get our staff and students and families ready to go. And, um, I anticipate we'll probably pivot and adjust a few more times. So thank you in advance for that, uh, right now. Good deal. Um, let's head off to the treasurer's report and Jeremy, you'll have sunny news for us about funding, I'm sure.
It's definitely sunnier than it, it could be. So, uh, yeah. Um, if, uh, you would go to the next slide here, I just had a couple of comments. I know over the last several weeks, um, the, the board has been asking, what, what are we hearing on state funding? What are we hearing on state funding? So I, I thought it was interesting to hear at last week's, um, Thursday meeting. I think a lot of it came during question and answer time. Uh, but there, there was some level given and I've been able to kind of talk with others and get a little more clarification. And, uh, hopefully the board received, uh, the email that I kind of broke some of these down, but wanted to just kind of reiterate and share um, the, what, what I'm kind of hearing. Um, so just starting off there, the, the comment that was made, you can see there from Governor DeWine, I believe that was taken from, uh, the press conferences as well as an article that I, I found from, um, cleveland.com. And, um, so the, basically what, what does this mean? The way that, uh, it would appear and what I'm, I've interpreted, asked some follow-up questions again with, um, a, uh, one of the directors that my association, um, talks with at, uh, the Department of Education. The understanding is, is that we'll be starting out, um, our first payment. So we get paid twice a month. Our first payment in July will be at the level that the, um, governor had had us at, but we should be receiving then, uh, your call in, uh, June that, uh, House Bill 164 gave back, um, some funds to us. So the, I believe the intention is, is that we will continue to be at those House Bill 164 levels. Um, by my calculation, it's about an 8.8 decrease from our originally planned levels. Um, but not quite up to that 14.7 that we were at, uh, with the executive order, the budget reductions. Um, so the, as you'll see there in some of my just kind of quote bullets, so the intention is, is to, um, preserve the state's options on planning and ensuring that they keep a, a balanced budget, but there was the uh, thought that they wanted to give us at least a starting point of this is where we're at. And then we could uh, as that, under what it means, that third, um, I think we're still in a waiting pattern to see where we end for the entire year. If our economy, um, continues to, to stay at where it's at or gets better, does not deteriorate significantly, um, I would hope that where we're at now would be the worst. And maybe we could even receive some of those, those funds back. Um, so I'll stop on that piece and then just talk very briefly on, um, the coronavirus relief fund.
So if I can try to translate what I think was in that article.
Yes.
Um, basically that the HB 164 level is roughly an 11% and change cut for us. And that's where we're starting from. That the 6% cut that was in the legislature's actions retrospective to last year, um, really has no bearing at this point on our funding for next year. But the state's trying to open the door to the thought process that it may creep closer, may creep further down. I wouldn't say closer to the 6%, but creep further down if things continue to look, um, I guess favorable financially. Is that a fair way to paraphrase?
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would say that's a fair paraphrase. Um, I, the, the way that I saw it, um, was that it was probably about a 9% is how we're starting the year out, um, decreased not 11. Uh, and the, kind of the, the gap between that, what I'm saying, 9% and the 6% 6% is the CARES funds, where there's no, there's no level of CARES funds to, um, continue to say that it's going to be able to help us with daily operations, if that makes sense. So it's, it's the governor's cuts plus the amount that was provided, the state support that was provided back to us in, in 164 to get us to around a, a 9% reduction from what we would hope to be at. Other, other thoughts or questions? Okay. Um, I think one, one other, um, it was, and it was made in a kind of a passing comment, um, that there were additional dollars that were provided to our state. And so I, I was curious what, what amount that was. And I, I think I found, um, the payments to eligible local and state governments, counties, um, for Ohio, if I'm seeing the correct, uh, payment, it was, uh, oh, it was over $3.7 billion is the overall pot that is, is hopefully being looked at. Um, and what the governor then indicated is that a portion of those dollars that have been given to the state would be given to the, to school districts. Now, the part that uh, I have not heard anything about is what does that allocation method look like? And, um, we, we haven't gotten an indication of what those dollars are. Um, I think the, the comment made me chuckle, but it was, it was identified by the governor that it wouldn't be enough to cover all of our needs, but it would be big enough that we would definitely want to cash the check. Um, so what, what that means, I don't know, but, um, I'm hopeful that for, in light of some of the conversations we've had earlier about, you know, additional hand sanitizers, will we need to have, um, additional masks? Will we need to do all of these other items for opening the school? My understanding is the window for this, these dollars, um, is from now until the end of December are, is the timeframe for spending, uh, whatever we would be given for this. So it really is focused more on, um, preparedness and, and, um, being able to, to have what we need to open school. Uh, as we get more guidance, I, I don't know what that, what all those, usually they're pretty good about saying it can be used for this specifically or not for others, but it could even, um, I could see um, some of the remote learning platforms could possibly be a, a, um, a, an allowable item, but we'll just have to wait on, on that guidance. So wanted, wanted to, um, mention this, but I don't have a whole lot of extra direction past, uh, just kind of the passing comments that we've heard. And that, uh, I'm open to questions, but that was, that was basically what I had for today.
Thought process then Jeremy, that maybe late fall might be around the time where we might know for sure what the year would look like from a state perspective?
That's, a- again, that's what I keep on hearing is, is that late fall will have, you know, almost a, a, a year or a half a year, um, of the new fiscal year under our belt will be getting closer to nine months to a year of, uh, what does, how are the impacts of the coronavirus, um, affecting our state, local economies? Um, so everything I've been hearing is hopefully by late fall that we would begin to get better answers.
Okay. There's nothing else for Jeremy, then thank you for the report.
You're welcome.
And I'll go to item number eight, board members' items of interest. And, um, we've had a long discussion and lots of, uh, opportunities for items here. So I'm just going to go ahead and open the floor generally, if you've got something that you'd like to say, instead of kind of roll calling it. Um, if you've got an item, feel free to jump in with it here. Any of our board members. And I don't see any mute buttons going green, so that tells me that we're good to go. So I'm going to move it to item nine, public participation. This is the meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It's not considered a public community meeting. It's a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. And, um, as we do with the online meetings, we are requesting folks go ahead and send in their, um, specific opportunities for, uh, public comment. And Jeremy or Angie, did either of you receive, uh, anything?
No.
I have, I haven't received anything prior to the meeting and I haven't seen anything come in currently, so.
All right. Thank you for that. Item 10 then is human resources. And 10-1, it's recommended the board approve a one-year certified contract beginning in 2020, 2021 school year for the following people listed below. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Lan. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Sheri. Mark, is there anything you'd like to bring up here and discuss?
Good morning. Just noting here that, uh, one of these intervention specialist positions is a replacement for a teacher that has moved closer to family. Um, and the other three are additions due to enrollment, uh, and growth with our students with special needs. I will say we did have these projected in the forecast um, for ads for this year. And so doing the best we can to absorb positions when possible or not add positions when possible. Uh, but three of these positions are additions for next year.
Okay. Any questions or comments from Mark? Jeremy, I think, or Jeremy, I think we can call the vote.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
No.
Mr. Fuji? And I don't know, I know we had seen earlier that Mr. Fuji, um, was stepping away, so I don't know if he is back. And, uh, I'll, I'll take Mr. Schneider though.
I will vote yes. So can we pause the vote? Until Steve's return or? Because we don't really have much left agenda-wise.
Table the vote and then untable it when he's with us.
You're saying table until Mr. Fuji comes back?
Correct. I think that's the proper procedure.
I would, I would, I think I would concur. So are we, are we tabling for a moment and, and, um?
I make a motion to table the vote until the return of Mr. Fuji.
And I would second that as well. I just sent him a text to see how much longer he thought he might be. So Jeremy, I think you can go ahead and call the vote on the tabling.
Okay. Um, Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
All right. And he just sent me a text and said he's going to have to miss the vote, so he'll be back in five. So I guess we can revote again after tabling.
Well, how much more is on the schedule here?
Well, he told me he'll be back in about five minutes, so we can do the schedule of next board meeting and kind of hang out and wait for him for a couple of minutes if we want to do that. So the schedule of next board meeting is July 23rd, uh, at 6:30 PM in our district administrative office. And reminding folks that I believe we're still limited on capacity. And so we will have that streaming again on our website. And then the last thing on the agenda would be to adjourn.
I do have a question. House Bill, uh, one, I think it was 167, which allowed us to do the video conferencing that meetings. The Attorney General did mention that, uh, compliance required to have actual the ability for actual two-way communication with the public during meetings, which I don't think we've been doing. I don't think text meets that requirement. We need to figure out some way of having a feed where people, if we're doing video or people aren't present, where they can communicate via.
We were told by the attorney that we could read their statement into the meeting and then that the board could choose to respond, which normally the board doesn't respond when they, public participation. Typically the person speaks to the board so that we could read their written statement in and that, that counted. Is what our attorney's advised when this first started with FYI.
Wasn't my interpretation of what the Attorney General said, but.
So I guess I'll, I'll just throw out a question. One thing that we didn't talk about reopening wise, but maybe you can speak to a little bit Angie while we're waiting for Steve to come back for the vote is I noticed the state has issued a handful of different individual guidances on athletics. And so I didn't know if you wanted to, if you had anything to add related to that in terms of just how's that working overall in terms of what's being opened up, what's not being opened up, et cetera.
Sure. And I've asked multiple times, like where are we on sports? Like they haven't made a final, from what we've heard consistently is you can plan on having fall sports. What we've been doing so far is following the guidance on both contact and non-contact sports. They have phases from OHSAA that have been put out, we're in phase two. So we started in phase one with just having 10 athletes in at a time. And then we've increased that up to accommodate the split guidance for gyms. And so we've done that and that's all been going pretty well from what I've heard. Other than, you know, one of the pieces I'm going to ask tomorrow, I know with, with my daughter at volleyball camp this week, we've not been running the fans because of the recommendations of not having fans in those inside spaces. As you know, we don't have air in there and it's just brutal. We typically don't run the air handlers in there because there were issues with condensation. So it's just, it's like a hot box in there. So that's one issue I want to ask about. We don't know yet with fall sports. I've asked our athletic director, hey, are you hearing anything on the crowds? I've heard everything from maybe just parents being able to attend contests. I said, what about like our rage cage student section at the football game? He said, yeah, we've pretty much been told, don't, don't count on having that. That's probably gone this year. So I don't have any answers to things like that. If you haven't heard, the commissioner of the High School Athletic Association has just been replaced. So they're kind of going to transition at the moment as well. But everything that we have received thus far is that it's looking good for fall sports. That's pretty much all I know. Mark, I don't know if you've heard anything additional?
I have not heard anything additional. I know there have been several people that have stepped down or moved from their positions at the OHSAA. So I know there are some transitional components that are going into, coming into play here.
So we'll certainly like, will we hear more?
I did hear an interview from, I think it was their director of officiating. That's probably 10 days old now. And, and he had indicated that they were hopeful that they would be opening football to a capacity of 2,500. So 2,500 apparently is the magic number since that coincidentally is the number for state fairs. But again, that was him being hopeful in 10 days ago. So who knows? And well, and an executive director ago too. So who knows?
I just think it's interesting back to our graduation discussion, which would be in the same venue and, and thoughts about what that would look like.
So I see Mr. Fuji's been able to rejoin us. And so I'm going to go ahead and call 10-1 back up again. And we'll just kind of go to the vote as if we never started it before, if that's okay for everybody.
Yes.
I'd make a motion to untable.
Oh, I forgot that we had to untable. I will second the motion to untable.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes, welcome.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
All right. Then that would bring us to item 10-1, it's recommended a board approve a one-year certified contract beginning the 2020, 2021 school year for the individuals listed below. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Leanna, then Steve, I believe. And then Jeremy, I think you can go ahead and call the vote whenever you're ready.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes, welcome.
Mr. Crowe?
No.
Ms. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
So that brings us to item 12, adjournments. Recommended the board adjourn this meeting. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leanna. Jeremy, when you're ready.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Steve, stay safe there on vacation island. And we'll see everybody here in a couple of weeks.